I would like to start a new division. We have, uh, we've never started an army of regents, but we should. It's not just for our regents.
Why don't we just clarify the United States of America, including a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and essence and all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Beckhold. Mr. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hollabaugh. Mr. Baltis. Mr. Eresic.
Here.
Mr. Banks.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Chairman, do you have a call for?
Thank you. Mr. Eresic, for coming today, we were planning on that we would not have. All right. Also like to thank West Virginia. I can finally be here today. Mike, this way. All right. Uh, we'll move on to the approval of June 26, 2025 minutes. Do you want to have any questions, comments, concerns?
I do have a question. I just wanted to clarify, um, because I remember well the debate about the, or discussion about the nonprofit exemption language. And I recall that it was a six nothing vote had a tension that could recommend language. I recall that we had voted not to recommend the proposal, but we wanted to recommend language anyway in case it was taken up. But the minister's like that we recommended approval. If anybody remembers differently, or I know the topic is already recorded.
Yeah, because we wanted to have that language.
No, that is correct. That's a good catch, Mr. Eresic. That is not, um, that is not the way that should read. It should recommend not approve. And the vote was actually five, zero, one for Mr. Harrison. Or no, that was, so, yeah, you're right. It was six, zero. So that's, you're right, they should say recommend to not approve. Right. Which is not a good catch.
It was a correct condition passed on to you.
It was with the suggested language. That was a pass.
So it was just an error on the list.
Correct. So it should have said recommend not to approve.
Any additional changes? Excellent catch. Here is not a motion to approve.
I would see this as we subject to making that change.
Oh, sorry, subject to changes as stated by Mr. Eresic.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second. Additional discussion. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eresic?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Chairman, motion passes forward, here.
Next item on the agenda, comments from supervisors. Does it show anything to relate to us?
No, sir.
I'm going to hold business. We have, um, new business. The, I pronounced it right. Ferlich and Barrett subdivision plan, preliminary final approval. Is there anyone here from, uh, Barrett subdivision plan that can talk us through the application?
Hi, I'm James Ferlich.
Okay. I pronounced it wrong. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. We need some of my neighbors, John Barrett and Dustin Sahin. Kristen, Kristen's with him.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, we, uh, we just wanted to create a couple of new parcels and, uh, modify another one. Uh, the reason being currently John Barrett's, uh, house sits on my eastern property line. So, uh, we wanted to extend the property line westward and give him more space. And then in, um, exchange for that, he's granted me, uh, access from, uh, Barrett Road, I mean, Barrettford Road to, uh, parcel. I think it's parcel, uh, three, so that that's not landlocked anymore. And then, um, we're also creating parcel four in the southwest, so that, uh, in the likely event, uh, Dustin wants to buy that property, that it's, it's, since we're doing, you know, we re-savoryed everything, so, uh, we did that, drew that line in anticipation of him one day purchasing the property. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could have, um, Mrs. Delco, please provide the engineering comments.
Um, we have not done a new review because a grant was just, uh, resubmitted recently and we did not have time. We did pull over, um, some of the comments, uh, that were provided with regards to our original letter from June 20th. Um, the, the only one that was really addressed was item one. There was a discrepancy in the total of the western most property line. It did not equal the total, um, that has been adjusted to be correct. We had asked the question about septic testing and sewage facilities. Did you, did you receive any response back on that? Um, that could potentially be a big item, um, because typically in Allen County, number one, you need to know where those facilities are located to make sure you're not cutting off a lot where the existing facilities are. And then typically they will, uh, do testing on the existing facility to make sure that it's functioning. And then also any new lots need to have two approved sites. So that's a pretty big item. Do you know if that's any testing's been done?
Um, to be really honest with you, we're kind of new to this process and I just received this letter just a few days ago and actually just saw this right this moment. So now we haven't started doing that, but, um, just so I understand the need, what, what, what's the need for retesting that?
Well, anytime, uh, lots are cut off, uh, they want to verify number one that the existing facilities are not going to be located on a new lot.
That's, I think that was verified by the surveyor.
So would you like to move back?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I said, "Thank you."
Yeah, I think that was verified by the surveyor.
Okay, we, we've never received any notation from him. He, he just basically ignored our comment and didn't address it at all.
I, you know, I still remember being on the survey that this septic is, is noted on the survey.
Um, I see shed, barn, facilities.
If I may, um, I think this is an important item. Um, what we typically do in this situation is, is what we table it so that you have an opportunity to go back and have these things addressed so that we can look at that information. We certainly would want to make a decision based on not having everything, which, you know, septic is that only a very important thing.
May I look at the plan so that I can verify? Because I am almost positive it's, it's already on the plan.
Okay.
Here's, here's a copy right here. I, I personally am not seeing it. I see a dwelling, a barn.
Well, uh.
A barn, dwelling, barn, shed.
I'm not seeing anything.
I don't see anything referring to septic.
I apologize because this wasn't brought up, that's either, so.
Okay, so, that, that was one item. Um, probably the, the second critical item would be access to this layman drive being private right of way. Um, now hearing that the intent is potentially have the joint property owner purchase it, may change that a little bit, but there's no, nothing to say that if this got approved, it could just go to anybody, you know.
Well, Dustin Sahin has agreed to, uh, grant the.
An access, yeah. Unfortunately, it's more of a legal matter because that, well, the ordinance states that you're only allowed to have four, um, properties accessing the private drive. And that was one of our questions where how many were actually accessing the private drive now? Right now, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, potentially seven properties that are already on layman drive. Um, but that, that plan got approved some time ago and, you know, maybe at the time it was a different requirement. But right now, it has the same, we committed four on a private drive.
But, I'm sorry, I don't agree with you.
No, that's fine.
This is, it says, this letter here says, "Lends access."
Oh, five, I'm sorry. It's five parcels, but, but we're, it's unclear as to how many are actually accessing it now. And then this is where potentially could be a legal matter. Because that plan was done with different property owners, those property owners have rights to that private right of way and we don't know if they're in agreement to allowing more access anyhow. So those, those are our concerns.
Just to the record, I, I think they all agreed to it, but I, I.
I mean, that's just.
I do understand what you're saying. Yeah.
But then obviously the township has the requirement of five, so.
Right.
Those would be some considerations.
May I add that there are actually only four people.
If you'd please come on to the, uh.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So on layman drive, there's, uh, four people who live off of that private drive on one of them.
Your name, sir?
My name's Dustin Sahin.
Okay, thank you. We just need for, for.
Yes, uh-huh. Jim is one of the other people who live off that drive. Uh, we have neighbors, uh, the Nolans who own a property there. And then Patricia Dibman, uh, also owns two lots. So it may look on the map as though there's another, I guess, private, maybe residence back there or separate family that lives there, that there's only four people living on this private drive currently. So I just figured.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What about Mr. Delco?
Um, we've had pretty much tons of our, our reviews, or probably four. And, uh, with the exception of the first item from our June 20th letter, we did not really receive any response to items two, three, or four, so.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment on this plan? Hearing none, public comment is closed. But any additional discussion? It seems to me there's a few items that need to be worked out.
Am I correct? We, we don't have, uh, official engineering letter for the current plan.
That's correct because the revision just came to us within the last few days and it's got, it's been out since two days, so he did not have the chance to give over a review.
On the, for that note, I would like to make a recommendation to table, since we have not received the official engineering review of the plan.
I have a motion to table, do I have a second?
This is a discussion, sorry.
Oh, well, we'll let it, we'll let the session happen.
Okay.
If, if there's a second. Was that a second?
No.
I have a motion to table, do I have a second? Hearing none, motion to the floor. Additional discussion?
Um, to clarify, what, what is the, the property owner need to do? You know, what does he, can we help him with what, what's needed?
Well, I think that has to do with the information that they're getting from the engineer.
Hmm.
So I think that's probably the best avenue. There may be, um, here, there may be another, uh, legal question they may need to, in fact, uh, a real estate attorney, but.
Probably what needs to be, um, handled also is maybe a conversation between Mr. Shoup and, uh, Mr. Jackson from India, who is the applicant surveyor on this. Um, I think that probably go a long way to solving some of these issues. It's just unfortunate with the timing, I think, that some of these have been addressed. But that's, Mr. Harrison, your question, that's probably, well, in addition to this got review, I think a conversation between you and Mr. Jackson will, will help.
So there's only the one plan that we have, we don't have, you know, where the plan shows the septic.
What you have in front of you is the revised plan that we received, but that still does not show the septic.
So normally you would table something like this to give them an opportunity to complete it, but that motion was not seconded. So someone want to make a new motion on the table?
I'll make another motion.
Do you? I have a, I have a motion to table and.
I will second that motion.
We have a second to the motion to table and a further discussion.
Okay.
Yes, this is further discussion.
Yeah. With intent to the applicant to, it's, uh, looking at.
Sorry.
Uh, looking at tabling it, it's just the intent to get back to your surveyor to get these things cleaned up. Uh, sewer access, a lot for, I think, or maybe things about getting those cleaned up. By tabling it, it's not, we don't like it and we're, we're killing it. It's just giving you the time to get the information right so you can approve it. So it's legal what you look for.
Yeah, I'm, I'll just say, I understand. We're disappointed it's getting tabled, but I totally understand why.
Okay. And if this happens, Mr. Ferlich, then they would just come back to the line. So you'd be back in August.
We'll, we'll be okay. Just be, talk to Mr. Jackson a little bit more.
Sure.
Maybe Mr. Danzig. Figure that out. Thank you for your consideration.
Absolutely.
Do you have a roll call? Yes. So the motion is to table. Mr. Eresic?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Chairman, motion to table passes forward, here.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing that.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Kaufman Commons PRD, that's the approval. If anyone here from Kaufman Commons, please go forward and say a name.
Who are we doing here, some study?
Um, whatever's convenient, but, uh, if, uh, I'll say it's an audience, it's a real good. And Bob, if you would just make sure you're in the podium.
Motion.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Robert Bynne with Shepland Company. Here to propose the Kaufman Commons yard development. Property is located to the corner of Kaufman and Barrettford Roads. It's a 10.76 acre parcel, zone R3. What we're proposing is 20 single family units with a density of 2.1 units per acre. Proposed minimum lot, lot areas are 6,820 square feet. Minimum lot width around 82 feet. Building setbacks are 25 front yard, 10 side yard, 25 rear. The proposed open space is 3.02 acres net after calculating out the 25% steep slopes and easements, which equates to 31.23% of the unit, no cover, 30% required. We're proposing a 600-foot-long cartway to be built into township standards. This cartway will also have 4-foot wide sidewalks on its side. Address stormwater, we're proposing a stormwater management basin. The development would be served by public owner, sewer, and utilities. Each unit itself will have a driveway capable parking two cars and will also have, uh, garages capable of having two cars. And on the east and south parcel edges, there would be a 35-foot, uh, white buffer.
Engineering review?
Okay, um, we reviewed the plan on July 18th and then subsequently, we put out a plan submitted again. We ran into the same issue with the tidying, uh, squatting up being, uh, available to re-review. So, uh, all that we can really do is go over the comments that we have from our July 18th, uh, letter. Scott had questioned, uh, again, the required minimum land area should be, uh, 10 acres for PRD and once you take out the road rights away, you're only left with approximately 9.7 acres. That was the first, first comment.
Regarding that comment, I mean, I think that's very significant. Uh, and I recall there was a discussion about that. Has that been resolved?
Yep. The updated letter that you all should have dated January 22nd is their response. And, Mr. Perry, if you want to touch on that, I mean, if you have it in your letter, if you want to.
Essentially, my D and survey is 10.76 acres. I don't think in the ordinance it specifically says the right ways to be excluded consideration of the PRD requirement.
I mean, it defines lot area, right, as exclusive with public or private rights away, rights away. So I think that's where Mr. Shoup's getting that confirmation from.
Yes, correct.
So would that include the proposed?
Well, I mean, I, you know, that's a fair question. I mean, I think that's why Mr. Shoup's raising the issue. Uh, yeah, I think, I think the only question may be is that require a minor, you know, request for a modification, or request for a minor modification to cover that potential.
Okay.
So it is, it is an issue of interpretation. Um, I can have further discussion with Mr. Shoup and we can all continue to talk about that.
Okay.
And again, I'm never going to guarantee that someone's going to agree to a modification, but if it's a matter of, you know, this, this sort of discrepancy, not thinking that the supervisor would have a major issue with that. Can't see, can't see why, but, uh, you know, I, you know, I want to speak out, so.
Okay.
Um, the second, second comment was with regards to, uh, buffers and screens being provided and he had, and Scott had indicated there were upper lines shown going across lots in item one and 120. Um, and I believe your plan does not show that anymore. I would call here, and we're seeing that, seeing this comment to that effect. Um, but again, we don't have a new letter stating that, that. Also, then item three was with regards to reference the Franklin Road and I see that has been changed and corrected to Barrettford Road. On, uh, recording sheet one, Scott had erroneously, uh, stated that, uh, any storm sewer that were greater than 15-inch should be, thinking, stating that they were the township's responsibility. He only intended that to be within the red right of way. And I believe you responded that you corrected that good as well. Um, item five was with regards to radius along the proposed road and Kaufman Road and those have been added. Um, item six was with regards to pedestrian easements. There was pedestrian easement. Okay, where the other one was. Uh, he had recommended for one be moved. Sheet that showed on, you know.
I don't know if the comment, but we did relocate it.
Pedestrian, okay, I see it. Pedestrian easement has been relocated to the open space parcel, which we felt made more appropriate sense. Uh, item seven was with regards to fire hydrants. Um, I believe that I did see there was a letter from the fire chief. Uh, might not, or was that on this plan?
Yes. I did receive a letter, um, this afternoon, which I will forward to Planning Commission, that were interested in training Austin, and those related to fire hydrant replacement. But yes, I can forward that to him.
That was the main thing that he gets off of the plan and the right locations.
Yep.
Uh, from the discussion you had at the beginning, the next item was with regards to the sub-sprayer and 25% easements and grading. And I didn't share your calculations, I've now memory buys.
Correct.
Number nine, there was lot coverage. And Scott had asked that he remove notation about those coverages. Did you take those off like you said? Um. Site charts on drawing sheets one, R C one and C 200. This is, this density is 1.8 units per acre. And that density needed to be based on the area less the road rights away. And 2.1, that was changed to 12. And there was, he had requested a note be added with regards to the buffer areas of being disturbed or cleared trees and we added that.
Correct.
With, with the exception, I think, of the 10 acres and the request of the modification, um, from what we're hearing, it sounds like majority of the items have been addressed. However, we don't have a new letter, but we would obviously, uh, going on.
All right, thank you very much. So if anyone here from the public would like on the other side?
Victoria Austin, Hamlong Street. I just wanted to ask the developer, are you aware that, uh, this plan development is located within the evacuation zone of not just one, but two unconventional fracking wells?
No, it's just a comment. Yeah. Uh, thank you for your comment. Sorry, intermission discussion. Any additional public comment? All right, hearing none, public comment period is closed. Any commission discussion? It seems like you still have a question about the average.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that upon reading the zoning provision, uh, specific to PRD, so the lot area definition, I'll cite about Mr. Shoup does, say what I said, is it? But, uh, when you look at the PRD, uh, ordinance, uh, in specific language, they refer to as contiguous land area. Uh, so I, I think that, uh, the most reasonable interpretation would, would be to, to use the deemed slash surveyed, uh, area of the, of the parcel. And, you know, the deduct for the road rights, and we still don't find the density, you could have that. But as far as the eligibility to be what PRD, if the land area is over 10 acres, is it R3, R3 district, is that right?
Yes.
So, yes, so that would be, so I, I would be comfortable saying that that means that requirement that the, uh, it exceeds the 10 acre. So I, I would be comfortable saying that that means that requirement that the exceeds the 10 acre.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions?
Yeah, the, based on what we were set, was there a landscape plan? Is there? I'm not seeing one.
Is it? So the most recent plan is the one that we have in front of you. I did not check the city, I believe. Mr. Perry, was there a landscape plan in, in what you were saying?
Okay. Do we have an operator who can see such a plan in the future? Or is this a one dot?
Mr. Chairman, what is the application filing date for this one?
This one was the, going backwards to May, I believe it was 31st, when you guys submitted this. We've already received one extension through the end of August on this, which I had a conversation with Mr. Perry before that we, that we may get another extension anyway. For that.
Your, your setup, thank you.
On that note, I'd like to make a motion to table. Oops, sorry. On that note, I'd like to make a motion to table. That way we can see the actual final shoot review of this. We can actually see landscape and, and how to view the street buffers.
I have a motion to table. Those conditions, or second? A second? Motion second? Further discussion?
Can I, can we ask if the applicant is going to grant us that extension before we get down to the action?
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Eresic?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, motion to table passes four to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the wilds conditional use. If ever there was some IP issue, would we get that fixed up?
They would get lucky.
So that will be.
Or first.
Thank you, that's all.
They did. They have it there and they have hard copies.
Yeah, try that.
But they also have it on their iPads as well.
Of course.
Good evening, Stephen Victor, Victor Wutzl Associates. Also here with Leslie Peters, which is our legal counsel. We're here tonight to further the discussion on the wilds townhouse plan. We understand that engineering review is not complete, so we're not looking for any further action. Basically a tabling. And that we're going to just take this opportunity to just bring you up to speed. Our original application requested both a preliminary plan approval and a conditional use. But a conditional use application wasn't submitted. So Scott has informed us of that and we have since submitted the application for the conditional use. Townhouses are a conditional use within the area that we are located. The original application envisioned 137 townhouses. Those townhouses were to be upon their own individual lots. And that they would be sold in fee simple. Mr. Shute came back and informed us that based on the definition of lot area, the road right of way would need to be excluded from the calculation for density. Therefore, rather than deleting units, we have deleted the road right of way. So by eliminating the road right of way, what we have created is one singular lot upon which the 137 townhouses and their shared driveway would be located, including the storm water management facilities. And we would be selling the units in condominium. Meaning that the owner would be purchasing the structure that the, they live in. But the land underneath it, all land outside of the building, et cetera, will be owned in common by the condominium association. So by meeting that requirement of eliminating road right of way, we now have met the density requirement of being allowed to have 137 townhouses. And so that's sort of what's before you. And we're here just for discussion purposes. So do you, anyone have any question regarding the change from fee simple to condominium?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Richter, if you had needed to reduce the density in order to not condominium this project, how many units would you have lost?
My memory was that it was approximately 20 units.
Thanks.
Yes. So we could be here for 117 units fee simple for 137 units under condominium. Yes, sir. The basic plan design, whether it be fee simple or condominium, is pretty much the same as far as its street configuration, where we access on the Star Road, out of the plan curves in and goes across the drainage way and gets to the southerly hilltop area and terminate at two cul-de-sacs and then a loop road. And in the inside of the loop road area in the southwest of the corner of the site is where the homeowners association community center would be. That community center would be a clubhouse, a pool, pickleball court, tubachi courts, two shuffleboard, and also a dog park as well. So, and that's a slightly expanded facility than what we had on the original fee simple application. Not because the area changed, but just because we thought maybe the buyers of this would like to have these additional amenities.
And with this plan, I notice, so the road would all be private?
Yes. There is a 70-foot access and utility easement that follows all of the roadway configuration. Normally you have a 50-foot right of way, whether it be public or private. And you typically then throw it under 10 feet either side for the electric utilities and some other miscellaneous. Thus, the 70 feet, 50 plus 10, a 10. So we just mirrored that. We know that it's a common practice to build all of that infrastructure of street sidewalks, et cetera, within the, a 70-foot zone, if you would. And so we have met that. The sidewalks, if you, and I easily see it on the drawing. Sidewalks are proposed on one side of the street throughout. Because this is neither public nor private streets, the sidewalk requirement isn't there. But we felt that it would be appropriate to have such. So you can see how the sidewalk runs along one side of all the streets. So it is possible for someone to walk to and from the community center area or just be out for a walk. There are two CBU locations. The first CBU, central box unit for, is where your mail is delivered. The first one is immediately upon entrance into the plan off of Star Road on the left-hand side as you come in. There's a pull-off area where the CBU would be located. And that would serve approximately half of the units. And then the second CBU would be located at the parking lot or the community center. So kind of encourage and make it easier for those who live deeper into the plan to be able to pick up their mail hopefully in a pedestrian fashion as opposed to everybody stopping at the mailbox at the front door. I think that if you were to compare this with a, what I'll call the a normal fee simple, you would find that it's pretty much identical, probably with the exception of the sidewalks. If it was fee simple, we had public streets, we'd have sidewalk on both sides. One of the reasons and thoughts for one side is you'll notice that there are perpendicular parking spaces, pull-in parking spaces scattered through the plan. And the hazard, if I would say, is that if somebody pulls into that and the sidewalk is behind them, there's the potential for that conflict between a walker or somebody backing it out. So we intentionally put the pull-off visitor parking areas on the non-sidewalk side. And so that there would not be that conflict if you went to pedestrian and people backing out or pulling into a visitor parking space. The townhouse, there's three different townhouse units. By cover point, in your presentation, there are pictures of those. There's the wax brick, the thorn wood, and the Schuber. Schuber, thank you. They're all two-car garage, prominent tree type units. Yes, sir.
So we don't have, sorry, is that a quick conclusion?
Open for questions wherever you're at.
All right, any reaction?
No.
We don't have engineering.
One thing real quick on this, just with the previous plan. I did receive comments from the fire chiefs regarding this plan. I forwarded those to the planning commission. I received those last night. I forwarded those this morning. Mr. Richter, I'll forward those to you as well.
Thank you. Would still have, I know the applicant is requesting table.
Yes, sir.
But I would still like to open up for public comment if there's anyone to ask.
I'm Paul Pish. I'm on Star Road. I thought, I forgot a great voice, by the way. He's giving me that standover, like, 137 units. I'm concerned about the traffic, you know, it's like single interest on the dire road. That's my concern, even with 71 houses before the previous proposal. You pay a two car per house, 144, whatever my math is, they don't, whatever. But with 137 units, that's a little bit of a concern for me. Not that many condominium around here, they're like, dear. I'm not saying I'm going for it, and I'm just saying I have a serious concern about it. I'm sure my neighbors would be concerned about it too. That's about what I have.
Thank you for your comment.
I need question.
Any additional public comment?
We have submitted a traffic report. You're welcome to come to the township and read that. The traffic engineer has made a projection as to the trip generations and the safe site distance. We also have on the northwesterly corner of the site off the cul-de-sac that's in that location, there is an emergency access that follows existing driveway today. And so that we feel that the combination of the single access with the emergency backup will be adequate for the trip generation as reviewed by our district associates. Thank you.
By the commission session, or discussion, keeping in mind.
What's the width of the one-way loop? What is the road?
It is labeled, the streets within the plan, I believe, are 20 feet wide. I think in that area, I believe the one-way street loop, it's either 16 or 18. It is labeled on the drawing, so, I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Is there signage that you have on that road to let people know it's one-way or?
Yes. Yes. We'll put a do not enter on the one side, et cetera. When leaving the parking lot area, there would be one ways direction signs as well. So do not, no right turn off of the westerly one and no right turn out of the northeast of the one coming out of the parking lot.
So there's two one-way areas, the large loop and then cul-de-sac for the little island down here too.
Oh, that one? Yes. Yes, that's correct. That follows the design that's in your ordinance. Based on the length of the cul-de-sac, you have three different configurations. And so that mirrors the geometry that's within your ordinance for cul-de-sac of that length.
And that would mean our ordinances?
Yes, it does.
That's all I have.
Thank you. There's no additional questions. I have a motion table.
Make a motion to table?
Motion table, our second.
Our second.
Here, now may I have a roll call?
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Eresic?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is table passes four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for receiving your attitude or August meeting. Thank you.
Don't sell too hard copies.
Next item on the agenda is the planning commission workshops, land development items.
Thank you. Just want to try to find the connection so we can flag, hook a flag center to you.
We'll work on that on our end too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next item is a new type of paper for us. So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all of the members of the community who participated in our workshop. Some of them are here as well. Thank you so much. If you're not here, you're a vital part of that as well. I'd like to make sure that it is mentioned. So with that, what we've done is we've prepared a, an ordinance draft amendment. We've submitted it. Actually, we have indeed had engineer comments on it. And at this point, what we figured we would do, it's the first time we're going through this, kind of learning as we go, is it's going to be a brief presentation. Alan's going to jump into it because he is definitely more knowledgeable than I. And he loves to like, oh, Peter, thanks.
So just to kind of recap the workshop. We were given direction by the supervisors for essentially looking at landscape buffers. Beyond that, the workshop got to create the product, which took us a little bit of time, your feet whacked, I'm not sure how we even conducted ourselves, which went, it was very positive. Kind of self-governed, we got a good product, we, you know, figured out what we needed to. So what we ended up presenting or producing was kind of a rewrite of the development standards. As we got into the process, it just became easier to just start on the whole landscape section. So what you're seeing, what was presented, was not a codified product. We just kind of took the whole section, re-let it, gave it back. We just kind of took the whole section, re-level it, gave it back. So if you're trying to look at it from the current zoning ordinance to, you know, 185 subsection one, it may not match. That was not our intent to codify ordinances to provide the information you go into it and staff could figure out how to put numbers to it. Big things that came out of the workshop that really drove it was we learned that there's reference to a buffer screening table, which is actually not included in our ordinance. So it was intended to be, it was omitted, we got a copy of what was supposed to be submitted with it, and then worked from there. We updated that buffer chart. Big thing that we changed or we added to that is one additional buffer requirement, which would be a more restrictive buffer requirement, or protective, well put. And just looking at it from protecting one land use to another, with things that came up and felt that we could protect the joint parcels a little bit better, so we added that one section. Throughout the process and with the community, everyone kind of realized how you change one thing, it has a ripple effect and how complicated it can get to, you know, get to a product. So we ended up doing that, but then we also realized there were some uses in the screening table that didn't have definitions to them or were not referenced. So we started adding those, we started reacting to other things that aren't included into it, we added those. Adding definitions to certain things, but other thing that we did was, we were asked to by the township, was to look at adjoining jurisdictions, Richland, Hampton, what they were doing, which we did. I ran around and wrapped every ordinance from, you know, Hampton and the workshop looked at them, started implementing those, you know, what did they have that was good, you know, different wording, brought some of those elements in. We also looked at the request of supervisors was whether to move from Saldo or the zoning ordinance, the landscape requirements. To be honest, Saldo had very little in it that was good. So essentially, we just, Saldo would do the zoning ordinance just because it was easier, copier, copy and paste. No more, speaking out term, but I don't think there's any real discussion. It just made sense to move it over to, you know, from a work perspective. The, on the buffer requirements, then we also looked at some regulatory action as far as trying to give the township a little bit more strength from an enforcement's perspective. Honestly, we took a lot of that from Richland Township's ordinance. Mentioned to Gavin, I mean, a lot of that, we do need legal advice on that. But trying to get some more leverage that township could actually enforce what we're requiring from buffer screening, those type of things, so we gave the product we're asking for. Am I missing anything else? It, you know, reiterate, Patrick said, thank you, and everyone else that was involved, the process, from a community perspective, to actually sit down and take one section of the ordinance, we spent four months, you know, you know, one evening, right? But we were all working on it independently, different sections, codifying, coming back, talking about it with good, positive discussion. It can truly, the group kept us on task as far as this is what we need to focus on. Yes, there's other things in the township, but this is a section of the ordinance that we need to look at. And I think from a community perspective, everyone realizes that, well, that applies to everything else in the ordinance. You know, there may be certain things that are passionate about, but you take landscape, or you take parking requirements, or you take traffic, or anything, that all applies to every other subject. And everyone got to experience, it's a slow process, it's a difficult process. And that's just government and how it works. But all in all, it was really productive from a township perspective. So, thank you.
I'd like to also just invite other members of the workshop to review. If you have any additional comments you'd like to add, you're welcome to.
Victoria, Austen, Hemlock Street, I don't have much to add, but it was a great experience. None of us knew what we'd be doing going in, and we really worked well together. We took homework home, we did research, and I think we did a good job collaborating. And thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. All right, Alan, excellent applicant presentation.
Good work.
For us. All right, so moving on, this, once again, kind of, you know, I'm trying to follow this here. Looking for engineer, staff components, legal components, where do we go from here? And how can we make the process, well, first of all, where do we go from here on this particular subject? Then also, how do we make the process more effective from your perspective moving forward as well? Because not only is this, you know, the completion of this particular workshop, but it will also be the beginning of the next workshop, so I want to make sure that's structured well as well.
So Mr. Schub did issue a review letter, and so maybe the first step, please, for right this moment, be run through that real quick. Sandy, do you want to run through that, or I can either one?
Sure, I can go through it. And I did personally, Scott and I both sat down and went through it all, so just to let you know, I'm very familiar with everything you guys did. You did do a great job for that not being what you do. So, so I guess our first comment was potentially moving, I realized for your benefit, it was easiest since there was less in the Saldo to move it into the zoning. But what we thought potentially, it may make more sense being in the Saldo. And Scott, Scott had some discussions with Gavin, I believe, on that. I don't know if you want to elaborate at this point, or?
Sure, I'm happy to weigh in. And let me be the next person to commend everyone who did some really excellent work on this. I mean, it was, it was, when I got the package back, you know, I think it was, not that it was surprising, I don't want to sound like, oh, I can't believe this is actually useful stuff. But it was, it was really good, and especially the substance of it, which is the, you know, the really kind of difficult, tedious portion of, you know, kind of, you know, digging into it. But so my comment about placing it in the, you know, taking it back, a majority of it at, or all of it out of the zoning ordinance and into Saldo, is just more, in my experience, the practical application of these sorts of requirements because they tend to be so property and development specific. It's very hard to sort of design a framework that's going to make sense for every particular project and every particular property and every particular zoning district. So should you have a situation where, you know, this is in the zoning code, it's an absolute must requirement, right? So you either have to do it, or you have to go to the zoning hearing board, prove you have a hardship, and try to get a variance. Whereas if you have that same set of regulations, but it's in the Saldo, then you can, the applicant presents this for first and say, well, we, you know, this, we understand the buffer required requirement, the landscaping requirement is a requirement. However, you know, look at the land of this property, or look at this particular project. We really think frankly just doesn't make any sense here, it creates hardship for us. You know, and it just may not have any impact as intended to be. In which case, rather than having to say, all right, you know, get this in the hearing board, get your variance, they say, well, would you consider a modification by the commission, and ultimately supervisors, to, you know, sort of address that on a more ad hoc basis? That's not to say that it is illegal, you know, technically illegal to have it in zoning. And there are many communities, many communities that view having it in zoning. I will say, at least in my experience, I see it more often in Saldo. And that's for the reasons that I just discussed. It just provides a little more flexibility. There's still, you know, it's not just wave magic law, you don't have to do it. There's still a hardship requirement, it's a lesser hardship, I would say. And it's also, it's from a timing and cost standpoint, not having you get to the zoning hearing board is a significant, you know, help to these applicants who come through. So, yeah, that's no commentary on the substance of the product that was provided for workshops, but just a consideration, and it's not a, you know, it absolutely must, it's just something that I wanted to run out there. Because again, in my experience, landscaping, screening, buffering, those sorts of design standards that tend to be individualized or maybe bespoke for a particular project or property tend to end up in the Saldo for those types of reasons.
Can I ask a question, or is that out of order?
I think we'll make out the order for this particular workshop, just for your.
Could the chart go in the ordinance?
When you say ordinance, which ordinance?
Like with the chart, then, you know, the chart, yeah, would that go in the Saldo too?
Yes, yeah, that would be the thought is, you know, because anything that's in the Saldo always has a qualification process. And because of the way this is, you know, I think a lot of the sort of heavy, the heavy lifting was up to the substance, right? By the workshop, but as far as turning this into a product that can then be brought back to the planning commission to say, hey, did we get this right? Did we catch where you're trying to accomplish here? That's probably a, Mr. Schub, maybe a little bit of Mr. Robb, as far as that's true. And maybe some of this elk around there as well. But I mean, I think that's, and because of that, it frankly doesn't really matter that you decided to start by moving it from Saldo to the zoning ordinance. Because when we caught it, we turned it into actual ordinance, we, you know, sort of undo that, keep the substance, and move it back to Saldo and kind of beef up this, you know, for instance, the vegetation provision, the Saldo, which I agree, it has some references to screening and landscape, it's pretty much worthless. And frankly, it's more sort of trumped by the more specific requirements that are in the zoning code and they beefed up since then. So that would be my thought, is once we finish the discussion today, the hope would be, you know, asking us with saying, hey, take that stuff that we worked really hard on, turn it into something that would be in ordinance form, you know, try to capture what it is we're trying to do. And we may even, you know, in the interim between meetings, or depending on how long this takes us to do, maybe bounce it off of you two, the chairman, vice chairman, to say, okay, are we on the right track? Or is this, are we catching against the sub-division we were trying to accomplish? And then that would be, whether it's August, whether it's September, that we'd come back with a document that looks like a ordinance that incorporates these recommendations. And then you could, those recommended, forward them to the supervisors, or they would then say, yeah, this is a great addition to our land development regulations. Let's go ahead and schedule a public hearing, get this thing enacted.
Question in regards to where this ends up living? Do we know, because the supervisors tasked us with kind of bringing these two things together, do we know their preference as far as Saldo versus?
I don't think they have been polled, but I will tell you, since I came on as solicitor in 2020, it's a drama I've been backing a bit over the time to Mr. Major and some of the supervisors, those who are trying to turn over in that time. So I might be partially to blame, but this was the first thing that was on your workshop task list. Because I had felt, for the reasons expressed, that your subdivision ordinance is lacking. And it hasn't been updated for a very long time. So as you know, after spending your six, seven, eight, 10 years on zoning ordinance, that, while it still has laws, it still has mistakes in it, you update it. The Saldo is, you know, certainly not, but I would say the latest and greatest example of subdivision ordinance. And so barring a sort of wholesale, you know, complete redo of the Saldo, this is one of the things I thought we're going to go ship away and sort of get some things back into the Saldo, have that be a little more robust on the land development side. And then, you know, over time, right, as money and time allows, it might be something that a consultant comes in and says, you know, we say, handle a kickback in the Saldo, get it updated to current standards, and sort of state of the art planning sort of regulation. So my, all that, that's a really long answer to a question that was just basically a yes or no, or one or the other. But I suspect that they would be in favor of moving into the Saldo, but I don't think we've pulled them officially on that. Does that sound right, Mr. Trevor?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment. And that's partly why they wanted you guys to look at it, is because, you know, in this research, what are the pros and cons either way? I mean, they've heard, you know, from myself, Mr. Schub, and extensively from Mr. Robb, but, you know, maybe we all miss something if that happens. So I think that's part of the impetus from them as well, is to see, you know, is there a benefit one way or another that you guys see? And, you know, if there's not, if it's one or the other, then that's, that's what it is.
And let me jump in on the flip side too, because I think, I recall actually, when I first started planning commission teams, there were some advocates to make this move that I was suggesting, or at least suggesting that you consider. And I believe it was a concern related to, is it going to be a situation where people are just going to go to the board, get these things modified or waived too easily, and ultimately not comply with some of these regulations? So if they're, if they're, I'm going to be a throw out both sides, that's, I guess, the potential risk if you had a planning commission and a board that, you know, for whatever reason, was not going to be as vigorously enforcing these regulations, then maybe idea, thought there of keeping the zoning to say, well, at least another quasi-adjudicial board would have to make a determination as to the hardship requirement before letting the developer off the hook. So I think, I think that's what that tension is, flexibility versus concerns about kind of too much, you know, too much flexibility.
And just so everyone's aware, the workshop did not focus on that. It really didn't have any of these discussions, so from a supervisor's perspective, we really don't have any feedback, because that wasn't, we took it more, and hopefully I'm speaking for everyone too, is in something I left out in the presentation, that was, we looked at it from a consolidation perspective. So the current ordinance has landscape requirements within every district. So like C1 has a requirement, Industrial has one, they're almost all the same, but with little variances. So it was copied and pasted a little bit wrong. We didn't really change any of those requirements, we just moved it into land, or development standards, and then referenced the districts in which they apply. Instead of having, you shall have one tree for every, you know, thousand square feet of building area, copied and pasted within every, like, C1, I1, we took that and referenced C1, I1 back over to that. So essentially, you can go to development centers, go to the landscape section, and that's where it all is. You don't have to go to C1, back I1. And there were a lot of just typos discrepancies, sort of referring to caliper versus, you know, something else. Yeah, and just cleaning that up. So that was more what we focused on from the supervisor's question, should be in the zoning or Saldo, was, well, we're just going to consolidate it all.
And I think that was their intent for the bigger purpose to be on. At least that's what I got, was that was their, they, the Saldo versus zoning ordinance portion was more in the midst of doing everything else, you know, assess which one of these maybe you think is better. And maybe there's not, you know, like as Mr. Robb's laid out, there's pros and cons either way. So I think what So, I think what you guys focused on was exactly what, you know, was, was intended.
Yeah, I think that also is to sort of, you know, how old and updated and sort of being proper in Saldo is. And, you know, so wherever it ends up, these are improved, like, refined regulations. You know, whichever part they go. So, I think you did an ambush about, you know, the primary goal here.
That's the fundamental question of, I mean, ultimately, it's the supervisors who are going to approve any amendment. So, I'm not clear on which path they want to go, whether it's, it seems to me the fundamental difference is how we would deal with non-conformity. I don't know a better term. Whether it's through modification process, which is well-defined within the ordinance. Can't be for essentially financial gain or anything like that. It has to be for legitimate reason. Or if it's something that people would have to go through the zoning hearing board. Is that, am I understanding correctly?
It, it is, but I will, I will tell you that I think a lot of these source requirements, it would be technically difficult to get our variance. It's not a good fit for the variance standards, which again, is why I think it went to some words of the Saldo. I mean, think about, you know, a variance is going to be based on some unique characteristic of the underlying property. Maybe it's got a strange shape, maybe it's got a, maybe the topography is unusual. You know, some, some along designs that, that create hardship and essentially do not allow you to physically comply with the ordinance. Whereas, you know, the, the modification standard does require or something, there's something unique that's hardship. It's not, it's not that strict. It's not just as, as tied to, you know, the property characteristics. It's more in relationship of the, of the plans and the regulations. So, you know, I think, I, I feel fairly confident that the, the board would, would lean more towards the Saldo. Again, maybe because of I told them, I think it's probably more appropriate there. So, I, if you happen to come on that scale, but just to be perfectly honest. So, if we were to draft this and incorporate, you know, start updating these regulations, my, my thought, subject to, you know, the planning commission input, would be that we, we set up as a, as a Saldo ordinance, at least initially, in the meantime, obviously, we can have some conversations with supervisors who want to. Just, I'm sure you can have some, some conversations with the chair, you know, each one of us to say, hey, this is, before we get too far down this path, you know, there was a discussion, this is where we're headed, and we on the right track? And how we, you know, I mean, the thing about this is going to be, ordinance is going to look fairly similar. It's just going to be the number rating in the section location. So, we can do a lot of work without necessarily having to file a decision on variance.
Would we be able to incorporate some of the definitions that we were talking about updating? And the reason why I ask is hardship is one of those things that the terms used but not defined. And we think we came up with a really good definition.
Yeah, the thing about hardship is, it, it, there's, there's so much case law. You know, there's, there's a, there's a, the way of modification, there's a statute that spells out when you can, when you can have one, when you can't. And that is, that's forced because it's statute from General Assembly Harrisburg. It's so big that it's, it's triggered, you know, thousands, thankfully thousands bill the wealth for lawyers. Yes, that's, that's obviously the most important part of legislation, yeah. It has been refined and, and so, it's difficult to sort of define a legal standard whenever there's a state standard that has been determined by court after court after court. And it's not to say that some of these, some of these definitions can't be included as part of this, especially the ones. I, I was talking to Mr. Schubert, I think his take was, yeah, there obviously needs to be sort of omnibus cleanup ordinance that has to happen, you know, whether it's Saldo, zoning, or possibly both. But I think his, his, I don't want to just correct you if you had a different take from the conversation, but I think it's almost, let's, let's focus on, you know, vegetation, screening, buffering, et cetera, any ordinance, any definitions that are associated with that particular type of regulation? And maybe save some of the other items for a more omnibus type cleanup.
Right, making all of it once, just, you know, all the kinds of, you know, ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely our thoughts.
That, that was it?
Yes.
I have a question, well, two questions. One, we tried to make it so that there'd be, give the township the advantage of enforcement. If a Dollar General puts in, all the bushes and trees die, trees die. There's, we tried to get some teeth to the township to enforce it. Would, would they have the same, would the township have the same power if it's in Saldo? Or is that kind of?
No, same, same enforcement power. But I will tell you, I think I know which is the bonding requirement you're talking about. Yes, the municipal planning code allows two types of bonds generally associated with development. One is your performance bond, right? So, when you get approved for a development, you have, you have an engineer do an estimate of all the costs of the sewers, the roads, the infrastructure, et cetera. And then that gets submitted to CNI and SCOPA, and they review it for accuracy. And then we require before any work is done on the project, that a performance bond in the amount of 110% of that estimated construction cost is supposed to, with the, with the township. So, it's a letter of credit, it's a bank account we have access to, whatever that might be. That's not what you're talking about. What you're talking about more is the maintenance law, which is also contemplated in the MDC. But it's very specific as to what the terms of the maintenance law is. And that is, the terms of, upon completion of the project, any public improvements. And this could be something like a street tree, this could be something like a road, sewer system, those sorts of things. You are allowed to require maintenance law, I'll tell you, 15% of the actual cost of that particular improvement. And it can only last for 18 months. And that's, that's thrown out very specifically. There are some townships and municipalities that try to go beyond that. And sometimes developers really want to get their project approved. And, you know, there's being some wayable if it's not going to be essentially a public improvement. For example, the landscaping associated with a Dollar General, right? It's not something that the township is responsible for. I think concept of the maintenance law is, hey, you turn this over to the township, so we start paving the roads, we maintain the roads. So, if you did a poor job constructing them, we have a 15% bond, at least for the first 18 months since we take them over, that we can jump in and help pay for those costs. So, the landscaping bond is a little bit different. I think that's how originally probably, you know, tries to differentiate that. And again, it's, it's, I, I see it in certain communities, developers, because depending on the cost, you know, if you can get a lawn that would cover landscaping, it's generally not going to be that heavy of a debt. Whether it's extra money, whether it's an actual lawn type lawn, you do a different lawn company. So, that's the only way of you saying, I could, we'll take a look at that to see if there's a way to kind of finesse that a little bit, because, you know, because of those nuances to it. But I'm sure if you understand the purpose, and we all know how difficult it is to keep things alive sometimes, especially in this way, yeah, so, I don't know.
And I have a second question. But some of the level of detail we put in this isn't in the Saldo currently. So, would this allow, I don't know, just an example off the top of my head, the caliber of a tree? Would this allow, since it will differ when it's in the Saldo from some of what's in the current ordinance, would this allow a developer or builder to pick and choose?
No, we, part of our process will be to eliminate, to the extent possible, any inconsistency between Saldo. So, you're good.
And I, and I think where we're wrong, we did clean up some legal stuff of what we produced. And it's just a question, do we copy and paste that to the Saldo? Or do we keep it? We, we put it under the zoning. We, we took everything out of Saldo, moved it over there. The question, do we take everything we did and move it over to Saldo? So, I think that, to your point, we'd still have the meat, the details in Saldo if it gets moved over to there. And we cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So, so, make a long story short, that first question.
And off the air ground too.
So, obviously, those items you had mentioned about daddy, some supervisors and so forth, we can determine with way ahead, based, based on that. The second item was cleaning up discrepancies. There were some, we noticed that you guys caught, we actually saw more that weren't caught. And so, there again, as Mr. Robb had mentioned, I think it would be a good idea if Joseph and potentially myself and we get together and make sure all of those things that are listed in the zoning are listed. And make sure they're worded correctly the same way. Because I know someone like Banks by Angel Institute, there were others that they had one wording and it should be another way. Just keep everything consistent. So, that was kind of the second, second item. And then it was kind of touched upon about the fact that we had thought it made sense to keep everything that we're doing associated with landscaping, including definitions and that sort of thing. And then at a later date, do the omnibus where to clean up the other stuff. To add, you know, if we need add definitions or when other uses are added, that sort of thing. So, that was our thoughts about not getting into that at this stage.
And some of our definitions, so, the reason why we felt it was appropriate for landscaping is because when you look at the table, which is part of the landscaping, there's, you know, things aren't defined. So, it's like.
Well, that's why we wanted to make sure everything that's listed is everything that's listed in the zoning uses. And that, I think when we clean that up, that'll help, help a lot of that. The next thing was about the table. And there again, that's kind of what we're discussing, just kind of cleaning it up, making sure it's very comprehensive, it covers everything that you all had intended for it to cover. Not taking anything out by any means. If we come up with a category that wasn't listed, a use that wasn't listed, obviously, you all did put as to what you think is the appropriate landscaping requirement for that. We don't have any intentions of putting anything in. And we would, you know, highlight that as such. Then we got down to the ordinance standards. Again, talking about putting it in the Saldo. One of the questions was with regards to the tree survey. We just thought maybe the wording of it should be a little clearer because it was, we weren't sure whether you were intending to do a tree survey of the entire property or just that portion was within the buffers. That's what we thought it was intended, but.
It was, I mean, we, kind of my note, I, I gave you on the wilds.
Okay.
Was the intent where current plan that was submitted on the wilds, they're saying existing vegetation meets the requirement.
Yeah, and we don't know.
I didn't bring it up, but I approve it.
Yeah, we have this tree survey within the buffer, it would show whether or not it did.
Correct.
Yes, definitely.
And that, that was the intent.
But we did, we assumed it didn't mean the entire property. Because I think you'd get some pushback if you did.
Offsham burnout.
Well, some do. I, I don't want to say that none do, but yeah, there are some that require that. Then we had just clarification, what the screening table, what that, that first column was intended to represent, we just said developing or as you maybe call it. We can use whatever you would like. Under the, the one section, 153A, it, it talked about small and large trees and evergreens. We just thought maybe there should be some clarification as to the DPH that you were looking for. Or, you know, the height of the intended evergreens.
And that's, that's, that one, which is A.
Yeah.
That will be on the list. That, that was a good pickup. And some of that is actually, that was just a carryover from.
Which is fine, and I understood that, yeah. We read it, and we're, it says the same thing, or similar thing did before. And we just thought maybe we want to clarify that. So, if you have any input into that, that we would obviously take that into consideration. And then the standard width of the buffers. I don't think that was listed as the YH. It showed representation, but we didn't know the actual width. So, we would, we would hope for something on that as well. Then the question sort of came into play because with the frolic, they're not frolic, the copman plan, we weren't sure whether it was intended that the buffer yards should cross over where streets are, whether they should be mentioned to, you know, obviously, you're allowed to have streets within the buffers, that's where it's going to get clarified. And then items five and six, there were a couple of things I don't unfortunately spot when he was helping to gather up my information. Do you have, Joseph, those two sections, the A9B and A10, that maybe you could work, read those? Because they were very, I want to say vague. And I think that was a section that you just kind of copied over. And we weren't sure where you wanted to head to those. If you wanted us to try and clarify that a little better.
We could have.
Hey, you could. Trust me, like I said, of all the work you guys did, I, it would not surprise me that those were, I think, were carryovers from. When he sent, when he sent me, he sent me just with the letter without the actual option. So, I don't know, I can't remember what it said, other than I remember it was kind of vague.
Yeah, it related to the screening requirements. This was another, like I say, element they could have carried over. I, I think there just needs to be a little bit of clarity, because it doesn't even have read that too. I appreciate Scott, your, Scott review. I also had a little bit of a question on this. It just seems to be a little vague, probably that's where.
Which is a word, yeah.
So, this probably just needs to be filled out a little bit more.
Yes, if you could help us, if we did those, that would be helpful.
This is the section that tried to give flexibility for unusual situations.
Oh, yes. So, and this was to, when Joseph had brought up and, and Rob mentioned where you have, we were attempting to, if you have a site where you have a one-to-one slope. And naturally, that is your buffer. You know, that we're not giving some meat in there, flexibility to development to actually say that, well, I got this one-to-one slope, you know, 100 feet tall here, why do I have to put evergreen trees when it's not going to? So, and that was, I don't know, we stole that from somewhere.
But that was.
That was like a, that section, which was really just to give some flexibility.
Some flexibility, which is if it's in the Saldo, you would have that flexibility. So, maybe that's what we appropriate a little more. And when you get item seven, I know it was listed, the street trees being 40 to 60 feet apart. I can tell you, if you give them the option, they're going to be 60 because that's what every developer tells an engineer to do, design, or the greatest. So, I think if you, if you want it 40, make it 40. If you want it 50, make it 50. If you want it 60, make it 60. And there again, if it does, if it's in the Saldo, and it makes more sense in a certain place because of the way the driveways are configured or something, to make it a little more or a little less, that gives you the flexibility to do that.
It should be edited to 40.
You want 40, okay, that would be great. We were just looking.
30.
We were just looking for some guidance. And then we were a little bit uncertain. And I think you took this section from Hampton potentially off the side. The parking lots and the retainage of 5% for landscaping. We just kind of want to get, hear what your intent was on that parking lot landscaping. Because I know, we did a development in Hampton, and we kind of wrote it, we made it make sense the way we wanted it to, because they couldn't define it for us.
Wasn't this the discussion about having basically little islands?
We didn't have islands, but with Hampton, we were allowed to call the area just beyond the cars or in a bend. Even though it wasn't an island, we were allowed to constitute that as part of our 5%. So, I think we want to be clear as to what exactly we want.
Yeah, there's somewhere in our ordinance, like that up off of Saldo, and I think it could be somewhere. Yeah, there's somewhere in our ordinance, like that up tall field, Sado, and I think it could be somewhere in zoning, that that five percent is required.
Okay.
Somewhere in our current order, but I think it was an agreement that still wanting to have defining parking area to report.
I agree that, that.
You know, because I played the game from curb back up.
Curb along the bends, yeah, it's, it's.
But with the intent of still wanting from a heat displacement, that having landscaping within the parking area was something we thought still shouldn't be to me. I will get to that. It's all the but.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that percentage concept makes sense, I think it's just a matter of defining.
Yeah, I think we just need to clarify where exactly it's intended to be.
And I think the thinking from the workshop, it tended to be with.
It did, which is fine, maybe we can work on the wording for that, but.
No, it's parameter.
Yeah, so that's what we just wanted to clarify, what you were going for, so, okay. Because like I said, I know you played that game in Hampton, that's why it sounded just like your ordinance, so I said, oh geez.
Yeah, it's a specific term, that's something where like you first land halfway through, would you think?
It's touchdown points?
Touchdown.
Yeah, so you take, from an ecological standpoint, it's a touchdown point, we're creating a non-natural habitat for wildlife that allows birds, wildlife to pass through, take a big parking lot, you take Pittsburgh Mills, with the better part. Yeah, that's Pottles, but allows the bird and wildlife to go from point to point, so they're not habitating within that environment, but they can get to the next environment.
Okay.
I've never heard of that before, that's interesting.
Huh, interesting, yeah. And then the only other remark we had was about the clarification about the blind English, I think we already said what we need to talk about, so.
Well, and, okay, thank you for, I mean, this feedback too, is what we needed.
Yeah, and that's what we, it's all process.
In, in the workshop, we were very conscious and discussed, like, okay, we, let's get this so we can get that feedback, so, thank you.
Yeah, it's all process, so.
Yeah, this is super helpful for me too, Sandy, just kind of breaking it down piece by piece for you, so thanks to you and Scott for that.
Yeah. Other questions, directions?
Thank you. From a staff perspective, I mean, I guess, next step, sorry.
Well, so do you want to open up any other planning commission?
Well, well, I mean, that's a good point, because we're still sort of, in my opinion, it's still sort of like a presentation.
Yes, yes.
Of it, certainly, well, maybe we'll just follow the format, so if we most of the public here is involved in this, but is there anyone else who would like to have a comment on this particular issue? Now, kind of open the session, I think is probably the right, right step.
Mr. Anderson. Yeah, the process, if you find a simple thing is missing, like the buffer check's not there, isn't that something that's simple to add? Because it was supposed to be in there?
You like to fix it, all right, but you still have to go through the same process as if you were doing an entirely new ordinance, send it to the county, or if you have a public hearing, so even if, you know, something obvious like that, unfortunately you gotta jump through the issue.
Is it times when, I don't know what the legal term for it is, like something we don't have in ordinance, sort of things, right? But you have that, isn't there a sixty-day time period where you can say, well, we're pending this, we're making a change? What's that called?
So there's, there used to be a concept called the pending ordinance doctrine, whereby you could advertise a potential change or update, and once you had advertised, or made a public theme, you're intending to proceed with adopting it, then it is served as a sort of protection during the, during the natural adoption process. Because it takes so much time to get these changes made, it would prevent, it would prevent the developer from running in and saying, ah, I know you're about to change your ordinance, but I'm going to get in there and apply an application for you. Unfortunately, the pending ordinance doctrine largely does not exist anymore, based on some recent Supreme Court case law. So we, that protection is limited, if at all.
So putting it in the Sado, or the Land Development, whatever that is called, is it follow, have to follow the same process?
Yeah, still, still same public hearings, still category review, all that, all that stuff, unfortunately.
So you necessarily wouldn't want to do this over and over and over again, because it would be expensive too, right?
Correct.
Each one of those adds cost money, the public hearing, I mean, the, the resources that the township puts in at staff level, professional level, and you want to, that's why we don't do one, in theory, we could be doing one of these every month, because there's always, you know, improvements. We talk about this as any ordinance, it sounded to be a dynamic sort of living document, and there's always something that, you know, I'll read a section, and I'll see something, tell you, I'm gonna say, oh geez, I gotta make it to, you know, get that fixed up in some way. And that's why we do those omnibus, so, you know, maybe once or twice a year. We still did not do them before, because we were so focused on doing that whole unitizing ordinance. But it's a good practice to, you know, at least once a year, go in, do an omnibus update, and just kind of clean those things up. Okay, so we said we could put this on hold and add some weight. It's, it's for running lists. For the runtime. Yeah, you say, okay, you know, and when you see something, I think Joseph has already probably asked either a methyl one or possibly a written one, that, you know, one at a time comes and reads that, right? And this, this was all, you guys, you know, knocked out a bunch of stuff that we needed to address. It sounds like Sandy and Scott, when they were looking at what you found, found the order that needs to be created enough, so.
Yeah, that's a.
And that was also workshop's intent of screening table adding things, stuff we found that was not specifically landscape, but getting it on paper to just say, here's, I don't know. We spent the time on something we should look at.
Yeah, I mean, I saw data centers on there, of course. And that's obviously the hot topic in zoning, and something that, you know, I think I said publicly at the last supervisor's meeting, that would be a great project to, you know, get rolling on, because, you know, you want something you want to get out, because right now, there's, there's not much that would, that would really be a good fit.
Would you like it all?
I don't think we need to vote or anything on this, so just next steps, staff is going to take a bracket.
Yeah, we can work on compiling everything that you have, going through it. As we do that, we'll make sure there's nothing new that pops up that raises a flag, if there is, we can, you know, I can certainly reach out, Patrick Allen can reach out to you guys. You know, and say, hey, we discovered this, you can talk through it.
And you will have that today, August meeting?
Well, I was about to go next, but for timing, not trying to delay this at all, but we did table three items that will be back in August. And that doesn't include anything else that will be new on your agenda, which I already know, one item, so that's at least four. Between that and the amount of work I think this is going to be, I would shoot for having this back in September. That, I think that would give us a reasonable amount of time to make the changes that need to be made and doing them the right way, doing them correctly. And also give time to, again, if we need to have some discussion with the two of you, we can do that. Again, not trying to put this off, I'm just thinking that a month turnaround, in addition to all the else that's, that's already on the plate, and what else is going to be, I think that's a tall, tall order to try to shoot for next month.
I mean, workshop could do it.
I'd say the one thing I'd add to that is if, if the modifications can be done, even if that's a stretch, expecting everybody to have the time to review all that, I think it would still be helpful to get them into the planning commission center and later, so that they have time to really absorb it as well.
Well, we're missing several members here too, you know, even if it's on the agenda and we're not, we're just tabling it again until September, but, you know, the rest of the planning commission can't get feedback much, say that Bob, you know, didn't read this thoroughly. It would be good.
Well, and that's why I say, it may be an instance where we can have everything ready by, by your next meeting, but you may not get it till, you know, right before or right after, so you obviously won't have time to review it, but you would still have basically four weeks before September to look through it. So it may be that way, it's just.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the sooner that we can get it with the more time to go through it, I think would be helpful.
Sure.
And then also, if it could be on, you know, the August agenda, it certainly would be good. If there are, you know, other public comments that would help us in our review, that would be helpful as well. Even if we're tabling it, it's still, it's still.
Yeah, my thing there is I just, I don't know what, like what we would have, does that make sense?
Oh, no, no, we're, as Gavin said, we're kind of all, you know, going as we go here in this stuff. I understand.
I think it's feedback, so we may have some, we may have some sort of informal feedback and supervisors, we could.
It would be hostile, I think.
And that was maybe my next point, Mr., I think, Mr. Rob was reading my memory or my writing on that one. We can have those kind of discussions, e. Sado versus Zom, and we can kind of get clarification maybe on that, so there's a direction, we can get, you know, some other feedback, and at least have some discussions of, hey, here's what's, what's been presented, we're working on this. You know, any initial kind of thoughts, we can, we can maybe provide those, and then that makes it a little bit of a cleaner conversation in September when this, you know, pulls things back to.
Because that would definitely be helpful.
We could certainly try that.
Yeah, and, and also to feedback from yourselves, supervisors, as far as moving forward in format. We created, we had zero direction on what to produce or how we did it. I, and so everyone, you know, meeting with Joseph to essentially, I had to give a presentation to explain that what we produced, whereas like you start reading, well, well, number two is not what it was in our ordinance, well, we just changed it up, you know, without having that narrative behind it, I know it was, at first glance, difficult, what am I looking at, it's not, it's not a red line. So, I mean, I think it's, the process was very good, but moving forward, is there a little bit better of a format that could be produced? I, I don't know, maybe.
I think on that, no, it's a little bit unique, because looking at the other items on your workshop list, they're not, I wouldn't say they're as extensive as this one was, as far as, or even all encompassing. They're a little bit more drilled down on specific items, so what work may work this, for this format may not be the same, but, you know, I don't think anything was, as far as the way you approached it, I think it was, it was great. You know, I think in what you produce is certainly very helpful, I think, from a membership perspective, so. What worked this time may not be the best for the next time.
I appreciate that, too.
I had the same, I got that packet at first without explanation, I was like, wait, what's changing from what to what?
Well, and we had some highlighted stuff, I think, I thought the highlights were just the changes.
Right, exactly. So, yes, I did have that problem, but after you explained to Joseph, then it played me, I came around.
It, it, afterwards, it made sense, yes, yes.
Joseph, you did say something, I'm trying to remember. Speaking of the next workshop, I think that's something that we would like to have direction from supervisors. Now, there was a list, if they could, I think, our request would be if they could revisit that list, make sure it's still the list that they're expecting, is it a priority? I think it would be nice to have some feedback from that in the next meeting on which direction we should go for future workshops.
So are you asking for this list to be revised, like already it's confirmed or?
It's been many months since they made that list, so is number two still number two?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, again, to ask.
I mean, the next thing is with our agenda the way it is, you know, feedback from supervisors, that's, I think that'd be a perfect time, if they could give us some feedback, the list is still great, please worry about number two.
Okay.
And then I think that gives us the opportunity to find out who is going to, from the planning commission is going to chair it. Not me. But in, in getting that, because that is, that takes a little bit of movement, this is still new for all of us, so, okay. Even, even though like we're still focused on the landscape, we want to get that done before we move on to the next, I think, starting that process of, okay.
Sure.
Looking at the guy down there, he's kind of volunteering. He's not here either.
So there's no people.
What is number two, Joseph, or what?
Currently, number two on the list is consider creating survey standards or requirements for accessory structure building permits. And number three, the place, similar to, because it's basically to a regular accessory structure, we're getting a lot of, this goes back to last year, we received a lot of kind of unique items that are being used now as accessory structures, and the biggest example is shipping containers, there's not really anything, and again, like a lot of these things that you've seen on this list, there's not much in the ordinance regulating that, so I think that's the general theme of two and three is looking at accessory structures, like other unique items that become the hot topic now, like shipping containers, that kind of thing. That's at least, if my memory serves, that was the discussion when this list was created. So then, Mr. Stark, with what you said, so that would obviously put the workshop on hold for August, because then we wouldn't be able to report back to you until your August meeting. The next workshop could be until September, and we wouldn't have clarification on the list.
Correct, that's, well.
And that's one.
That's what I'm looking for clarification on.
And that's fine, I'm just, there would not be a workshop in August, that.
At this point, I'm not sure what that workshop would be, who would be involved in it, who would be.
Right, and just, yeah.
Okay, and I come back to your point, Patrick, I think having it on the agenda for even whatever product we have, but having it just to have that discussion of what's on, what is on the list for the workshop, who's going to be going in.
If that's the case, then I would probably just put it back where I had it previously, back in the comments and general discussion, because that's, wouldn't be a.
Yeah, but it's gonna have done, so you might as well just keep it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're gonna have all the revisions done in August.
He's keeping the pressure off of him.
Okay.
What's that billable hours thing?
You're sorry.
Limited by the number of hours per day, and that's true.
All right, okay. I think we're good with that one, next, general public comment.
Thank you, Austin Hem Longstreet, I'm wondering if maybe we should have some type of a workshop, given the speed with which AI and the whole industry is just taking over, should we have some kind of a workshop, even though we don't have anything in our Sado or ordinance about data centers or, you know, AI centers, whatever? Just put people's heads together and come up with some thoughts, because I gave everyone in the planning commission and the supervisory board that one folder with some information and a sample ordinance. By no means was I suggesting that that ordinance should be adopted, but it was just an example. But I just think there's some urgency, especially we're situated with a lot of natural gas and some open areas here that we're in prime location for a data center, that's all.
Thank you, Rob. To that end, Mr. Rob, you mentioned that that was something that the township is thinking about, is that fair?
It's come off the last couple of meetings, I think, it was Austin gave me some, she shared some good educational materials there, or in my world, a lot of model ordinance is now starting to float around. Obviously highlighted by that recent CMU, you know, event, totaling the ninety billion dollars, you know, AI-related, you know, investment that's coming, which will include, you know, by everyone's account, significant amounts of not only the kind of large data centers that you sort of see in the middle of the state, or you've probably heard about in the middle of the state, that, you know, just are churning out kind of massive, using massive amounts of water and electricity and churning out massive amounts of power, I'm not getting the technical terms, but but also, as we're learning, there's a bunch of sort of either onsite or very nearby smaller data centers where, you know, similar type, but on a smaller scale, they're horses who would have direct use nearby. And so, yes, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea to get started on that, it was kind of like with the solar that came up, that I know I missed the discussion on, but same idea, you know, when. that I know I missed the discussion on, but same idea, you know, when you hear something that's, that's sort of coming down the bike, you want to get out in front of it. Even if the document that you have is maybe not the perfect document, just you have some regulations on books, a data center. I'm not sure if it has that same factor to see, but I think it's, it's definitely going to similar track in my mind. So I, I would have no problem recommending to the supervisors that that be a priority item. Whether they say, okay, add draft ordinance to get us up and sweeping, you're all on this, or if they say, hey, maybe that's a good planning commission workshop item. You know, I, I got to, want to check it out, see the other one.
Could we maybe add that discussion into that list of priorities we're talking about? Because I wouldn't want to be taking, you know, two different tracks. It wouldn't be helpful if the supervisors are already planning on appointing you to make draft ordinance. The workshop probably wouldn't be that helpful. But if they say, hey, we're not interested in this at the moment, you know, maybe that is the number two.
Yeah, we can incorporate that into workshop topic discussion. We can bring that up and say, is this something you, A, want to discuss? B, how do you want it discussed? Either in a workshop or if we want to take route with the soul ordinance and just try to get something, you know, drafting quickly and, you know, at least get something on the books and then possibly look at it again later for a minute or something.
What would you think, Joseph, about suggesting, obviously it's up to the chair and everybody to putting it as a discussion item in the next, next board meeting? Sort of, you know, sending updates or something, you know, something sort of generic and we can, you know, confirm that list. But also kind of talk about data centers a little bit to say, can you help us, help us on the planning commission prioritize?
Yeah.
But I, I can't guarantee, we can only jump, but I think that Joseph, I can make that recommendation. You know, it's something, it doesn't have to be have our discussion in the public. I think we can add this topic.
Right. I think that would be the best route. And that way they can take it around amongst themselves. We get direction. And they get feedback on, again, because a lot of this stuff that just comes up, it is all of a sudden. You know, again, like, let's keep going back to the solar. And that was out of the blue. It's like, hey, if this is here, we need to address it. So, yeah, we can certainly make that a, a discussion. See what kind of feedback we can get.
Thank you. Any additional public? Comments, discussion from planning commission members and or staff? Anything for your. I would just like to say thank you again to everyone for all your hard work. Truly appreciate it. Both planning commission and public. It was wonderful. With that, we are.